For the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
This is the oath of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for attending. We'll probably meet in order at six oh two. And I think our agenda is set, so we're going to be reading the presentations when they're at the big group.
Did you see that? Well, ladies and gentlemen, we are honored tonight to have Kent Williams here presenting a donation check or grant check that we received for our FFA program. This is our fourth year as an ag program, and we're really excited to have received this from the America's Farmers Grow Rural Education Grant Program. We are being awarded $10,000, and we're super excited about that, and we appreciate all the supporters that have supported that grant. I'll introduce you here in a minute, but thank you for being here as well. Joining us tonight, like I mentioned, is Kent Williams on behalf of the Bayer Fund and the America's Farmers Grow Rural Education Program. Kent, thank you.
As Todd said, my name's Kent Williams. I'm a field sales rep with Bayer in New York City for Western New York. Today, we are here to celebrate the success of your getting the grants through the America's Farmers Grow Rural Education Program. The America's Farmers Grow Rural Education Program partners with farmers to nominate their local school district to apply for STEM grants through the program. Since 2011, the program has given over $18 million to over 1,000 school districts across rural districts across the US. We are proud to help support local schools like yours to contribute work on exciting and innovative math and science projects. Now, I'll turn it back over to Todd, so he can give us a little insight on what he's gonna do with the money.
I think before we go there, we should thank our supporters. Gordy and Peggy Lamb, if you guys could all stand up, and we'll give you a round of applause here in a second. Sam and Julie Scarborough, Dennis and Joan Phelps, Pete Zeliff, and I know Bruce and Jesse Nass were gonna try to make it, but guys, we'd like to thank you for supporting this grant. So with the funds that have been received, we are very excited that this ag program is expanding quickly. We went from 35 kids enrolled last year, we're up to 83 currently. We're really excited about that. We've got a sixth grade program that's really rejuvenated or excited these kids, and we've got some of our junior officers here tonight, so we appreciate their enthusiasm as well. We are going to use the funds to put the addition on the school barn. It's proposed to make a 12-foot wide by 32 addition for our hay, grain, and bedding storage to make it easier and safer for the kids throughout the school year, especially in the off months. When I say off, weather-wise. So that's what the funds will be used for, and we, again, appreciate you guys supporting our efforts. So, thank you. If anybody would like to come out in the hall for our picture, Matt, I should've mentioned you as well as a supporter. We appreciate it just for the, if you could take 30 seconds to do that, we'll get all the ag kids out there and our firms that nominated us. So if we could take two seconds to do that, Matt, or...
Yeah.
We'll be quick. If you guys would like to mount as board members.
Hi. I'm PD president, so I'll be stopping in tomorrow to visit you. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
How's my guy Brandon?
I have been spending way too many hours here to hear anything about him yet, so.
When are you tweeting all that out?
I did. I will send you the correct.
Okay, move on to approval of the minutes. Be resolved with the minutes of the eight twenty and eight twenty-six. Moving to be approved by motion. So vote.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor? Opposed? Passes? Visitors' requests?
Yes. Carrie, Cameron, and Amy Sarin.
Hi. I sent an email last month. I don't know if everybody got the email in regards to this. And I've talked to Mr. Fiskus about this issue. Every year, when Dance Inages tries to schedule their dance recital, it seems like we're getting pushed off from another dance place in the Batavia area. I certainly have done a lot for the community. If you guys have read the email. I'm a graduate from Oakfield myself, and I've had my business open here for five years. Each year, we've had it here. I also have special needs kids that come from all over the place to come to Oakfield because other dance studios don't allow them to come to their studio. So June 18th, I had come in, I make a donation every year to the music department because Mrs. Mylum allows us to use her lighting. Her daughter also takes dance for me. I came in June 18th to give a donation. I put my request in for the dance recital. I try to do it a little bit earlier every year because we keep getting days here, days there, or we get Memorial Weekend, which it's worked out some, but I've lost a lot of students because of the Memorial Holiday Weekend. Also, my help. I have to pay for a videographer. Lost him because they go away. I lost my DJ. I've lost my lighting person, Todd Slope, because they go away on Memorial Weekend. So it has put a ton of pressure on me to find new people that I don't know, and that makes me nervous. So on June 18th, I came in here, requested. May 11th through the 16th, the response was the schedule is closed due to probably they have to put the school stuff on the schedule first, which I 100% agree, school does come before any outside organization. I did, Stacy did make mention that Suzanne's School of Dance was pressuring her hard for the same week that I wanted. And also, she would let me know when the calendar had opened up. July 26th, I spoke with Stacy again at a family party. She's married to my cousin. She said she would see what she could do. August 14th, I messaged her. No response till August 20th. And she had said that Suzanne has got my dates that I requested because she went higher up. I don't know who this higher up person is, or if there's anything set in place to reserve the school auditorium, which I don't think that there is. No paperwork I have ever done. I've always just called or emailed or messaged Stacy through Facebook. I was offered May 20th and May 21st with the show of May 29th and 30th. So I don't know if any of you guys have ever danced or gone to a dance recital. That would be impossible to do. Plus, with my special needs kids, I have Down Syndrome kids, I have kids with autism. They would never be able to remember that far in advance of what to do that many days later. Other option was to speak to Suzanne. So this was my biggest issue with this. They gave Suzanne's May 9th through the 16th, which is two Saturdays in a row. So I'm willing to, I've always been willing to work around everything. So the one suggestion was is that let's see if Suzanne can come in here on Sunday. Because what she does is she sets up. She's just setting up for the kids to come on Monday, and then they start the rehearsal. She refused to change her date. So if she would've went from May 10th to May 16th, I could've had that week, but she took the Saturday. So she's essentially taking two Saturdays in a row. You know, that's somebody else like an Oakfield business could've used. Also... Let's see. So on Memorial Weekend, that's what I have put down in place now. I'm getting a lot of backlash yet again from the parents because they have trips booked. Everybody wants to go camping. So as of right now, I have May 17th booked, which is a Sunday, because if I have to come in on a Sunday, I will come in on a Sunday. I'm flexible and easy to work with. Mrs. Mylum's concert is on Monday and Tuesday, which, again, I agree she should come first because it is a school function. And then my shows, well, Wednesday and Thursday are my rehearsals, and then my show would be the 22nd and 23rd. So I guess my biggest argument here is I'm a business here in Oakfield, and it's been a struggle every single year to get a date that I, that so the Oakfield kids can dance on their own stage at their own school.
Well, we have the ARC here in Oakfield. That's over on Coa. They participate with their wheelchairs here. So it's for them to be transported to NCC, GCC, it's just that much more. You know, because we know, like, they can get in. This is an accessible building for them to get into. You know, so the buses, you know, the drive and stuff like that. I mean, so they're like our opener or, you know, for intermission. You know, or something like that, you know. So it's just that much harder, you know. So we're trying to work with them too, because this is their time of shine.
Yeah, I mean, we've had them, this will be our third year in the show, and it is a home on Coa Avenue that these women do participate. Two are in wheelchairs. One is in, one blind, and she's got other issues. And then there was one from South Main that joined us as well, that she was in a wheelchair. And again, my students volunteer to push them around and choreograph stuff for them to be able to perform. Now, Oakfield has been fantastic about putting all of the, you know, blocking off so they can get in and out, bringing them in. They allow us to use behind the stage because if they need to be changed or whatnot, they have no mobility to be able to just go to the bathroom themselves. So that was another concern. If we have to look elsewhere, we would have to probably go to GCC, which would be fine. It would be a lot more for the parents. We would have to fundraise. And, you know, I also work at Alexander School, and she had said that we could use their stage, but I don't want to have to take the kids out of their own school. I don't think that that's fair. I mean, my best years that I remember at Oakfield was having the dance recitals here with Ms. Younger and being able to perform at the school, having all my friends and family close by to come and watch.
So I want to say that Suzanne can't have her dance here. Obviously, we want to reach out to others as well. I think it's the fact that we've seen that we've put in the request soon enough to have it when we should have it, you know. And why it got bumped off, we were just wondering who we need to go to to have it for the day. Well, because she has two Saturdays, so she can have whatever we don't want, I guess.
So do you have Memorial Day booked right now with the school?
We do, but as the parents are asking, when is the dance recital? I'm getting a lot of backlash from, I've, I've...
We've lost, well, I know a certain family, because it was on that day, they started. And of course, dance just started like three weeks ago. And they already quit because she was like, well, we're not sure. Well, it's Memorial Weekend. Well, just give it a couple more shots, you know. So this year and last year, so all of a sudden, we lost two families because of Memorial Weekend. But she's gonna work with the school because there's prom, there's concerts, you know, chorus concerts and stuff like that. So that all comes first. But we just feel that maybe if we put our requests soon enough, we could, you know.
Make a change is not, it's not... For me, I wouldn't mind. I don't go on vacation. I don't go camping. It's not me. It's the parents that spend their dance tuition, and every year that they're told they're put on Memorial Weekend. And then, you know, the whole Sunday issue, and then having two days off, and then just getting us in when we can. I don't know how many parents are gonna want to spend, you know, their Sunday here with their kids rehearsing all day. But they're flexible, and they will do it if they have to. But we shouldn't be forced to have to when we're a business here in Oakfield. And I'm trying to get a lot of, a lot of Oakfield students do go to Batavia, and we're trying to grasp them to come back to the Oakfield area. You know, I went to school for dance. I have my degree in it, and I have a lot of experience. I have a dance studio Lockport that's been open for 20 years. So if we need to fundraise and, you know, find a sufficient place for the kids to go to dance, we can. But we want to keep it here in Oakfield.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Amy or Carrie?
Are you under the impression, did I understand you right, that you put your request in before, the same time or after Suzanne?
Well, June 18th, I came in when I did the, and it happened last year too. Like, I come in when I give my donation to the music department, and I say, these are the days that I would love to have.
So it's basically a year ahead of time?
Right, yeah.
Have you ever actually gotten the day that you requested, so you've done this five times?
Yes.
And you anticipate probably, your hope would be to do this again next year? Or your hope would be to have the facility next year?
The hope is to have the facility next year that is convenient for my parents and the dancers.
We join at Lockport too, so, I mean, seriously, as me, I don't want to pay the extra for GCC. I'll be honest with you, because, you know, we already pay a lot, which seems like girls enjoy. But it's that much more for that. But, you know, I don't want to go, rehearsals are lots there. In fact, they're, it's a lot easier when all the Oakfield kids, you know, 90% of them are students that are both here. So, you know, they're in the districts, so coming here is gonna be a lot easier than traveling back and forth to Alexander.
I mean, I used to rent out NCCC, and it was $4,500 for two days, so.
So ideally, you're looking, are you looking for three days, three consecutive days, or?
No, I'm looking for at least four days, five would be wonderful. But four consecutive days that I could have.
So like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so?
We would need Tuesday and Wednesday for tech rehearsals and lighting. And then we would need Thursday for dress rehearsal, and then Friday, Saturday would be the shows.
Obviously, for dancers with special needs, it's more convenient that way, or it's just more...
Oh, yeah. You have to, I mean, we have to take, I put little marks, and they have to see where they need to be. And just to have them in front of different lighting, that, yeah.
Nicole, there's other places that rent this out or sign up for it? Are they paying anything for those dates?
So historically, is how I know it. I'm mostly out of the situation for approving the use of facilities. Typically, if someone wants to use the facilities, they go online. On our website, there's a form. They fill it out, they send it in. We did have some difficulties this year with the system that we use is the athletics. You know, you know, you know what I'm talking about. We've had this discussion before, I'm sure. The athletic stuff, so they were down for a number of weeks without letting us know. So there was that situation. This is the first time I'm really hearing of this. So I don't know the answer to the questions that you're asking right now. I'll have to do more investigation.
We don't charge any outside groups to use our facilities unless it requires us to staff. So if... If they wanted to come in on a Sunday and be here all day, we would staff that, and they would pay what it would cost to have someone here on a Sunday that normally wouldn't be here, so.
I think if they're, if you look at the policy, I think if they're in Oakfield, in the Oakfield district, I don't even know if we charge them back. I don't think we have historically.
That's what Stacy said, that I would be charged for Sunday, which is fine. I've never said that you guys couldn't charge me for the dance. If it were for me to give the dates, I would fundraise, and we would come up with the money. But that was never an option. Stacy had mentioned that there's, we don't charge in the district for using the facilities, so. But if that's the reason why I keep getting bumped, like...
Well, it should be known, and then you should be guessing here.
The reality is, we have to do our own investigation. I mean, I have, we have to, I have to look into it, and then we'll get back to you. That's the best I can, I can say from my standpoint.
Not saying we can't change anything, but if possible, and you got that week, like the third to the ninth, does that work a lot better for you, or is it set in stone already for you?
What dates that, that she had, if she didn't have the nine, we could have that previous week.
Right, so that week, in a perfect world, would work for you.
Perfect.
And then you would want that same week yearly?
Yeah, couldn't we just block that out yearly and just say that that's, I mean, or there...
The history is that these other dance studios had these dates yearly for the last few years.
Of course, when she came in, five years ago. It was the first year that I started is when Suzanne's came here.
Yeah. And which was okay, because we didn't know when to get into it.
I would like to, personally, I'd prefer to have an Oakfield business have first, as long as they're doing it in a reasonable amount of time, and I think this is reasonable. I would prefer to have it.
Well, so you weigh the benefits of letting somebody come in here and say, okay, next year, instead of having this or that, then we're gonna have this. You know what I'm saying? I guess we look at trying not to schedule out too far in advance, just because if there's gonna be something that the teachers want to do, something that's something to put on, that's part of it. But like I said, this is really the first one here. So without knowing what the background of it is, I...
But with all that being said, if there's a way that we can get you here, I think that, I would like to, I think you've done everything that you should've done by yourself.
I mean, if there was something that I should've filled out online, I would have. I just always, every year, just talk to Stacy. I mean, she's family, so I just, you know, messaged or called or emailed her.
So when you came in, June 18th?
What did you say, 18th?
You were told you couldn't reserve it at that point?
Yeah, because they shut down the schedule, probably because they want to make sure that the teachers, like the music department and any plays or concerts go first.
Get athletics scheduled that way, so.
And I felt bad for Mrs. Mylum because last year, she wanted to use the day, one of the days on Memorial Week, and I think she was told no because I had my stuff there. But Mrs. Mylum's daughter takes for me, so I was like, if we worked it out, we just keep the risers, we won't touch them. And then I use her lighting anyway. Her lighting's already set up, so, I mean, it worked out. This year, it's just becoming a bigger problem.
Okay, well, appreciate you visiting us on that. We'll see if we can figure something out.
Okay, all right. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chair? Okay, be able to warn us. Be resolved after audit bills, payment of eight eight and eight twenty-three and nine five. Internal claims, auditor reports be approved. Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes. Treasurers report. Be resolved the treasurer's report for August be approved. Move a motion?
So.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Nicole, you have a report?
I don't have a formal report, just that the audit is completed. I think we did really good this year, again. I will be working on an extracurricular training for those issues that we still have ongoing. There are some that have already been corrected. The legal group, we have carved out. They have a large amount of money, and they do a lot of good things, so I've given them their own account. And there's a couple of other ones in there that are easy fixes. I think we've got a lot of new people in new positions, so we're working on just making things as tight as possible. But the problem is gonna come where I discussed briefly. If we have the extracurricular funds on our financial statements, it will make us a higher risk entity, so they have to do more testing. So 99% of what we get for school revenue is either electronic. We get taxes, those go directly to a lockbox. So the auditors have a good secondary check from the state. They can look and say, oh, yep, she got 13.6 million of aid. Yes, they received $4.8 million of taxes. So having $200,000 in cashing checks is a large risk for us as a district. So it becomes more important for us to make sure that everyone understands what their role is in the extracurricular process, really. And then again, with the federal fund programs that Tom talked about, we really need to look at our written procedures and upgrading those. I know New York State has, but we're gonna be working on getting some standard written procedures down for the grants, and then going forward and letting districts customize those to what they, their needs really are, so. So we'll be working on that, and the other big thing that's coming up is transparency reporting for the state, which is kind of exciting for us, for, well, for me. It'll just show if there's a discrepancy between the amount of money that's being spent for people in the different schools. So for us, you will see a per pupil spending per building, basically. They will allocate all of the overhead type expenses, like buildings and grounds, like me, like John.
So it'll break down?
It'll break down basically per pupil in what it costs to educate somebody in elementary school, what it costs to educate somebody in high school.
So you could theoretically, like, track a special ed kid or a student with special needs and then?
I don't, it's not gonna get down to the kid. I mean, I could do that for you, I don't want to, but I could. But, but it's not gonna go to that level, but it'll really be able, show us if there's a discrepancy in funding, really. So we will be having some accounting changes with the codes. The coding of things may start to get more broken out for you, which is not sometimes easy to see or understand. So just so you're aware, that's out there. I want to make sure we're proactive and have that already done. It's, we will have to do it for New York State in the next couple of months. One will be new in January, February, I can't remember which. But, so I need to get going on that now for the 1920 sort of budget you do it, and then we will be required to do it through ESSA next year as part of everybody they're implementing, based on number of buildings, size, so we will be in that as well. But if we have this piece of it done, it'll be much easier for us to implement the next phase.
Was there, is there a way to have the National Under Society Treasurer do more so he doesn't get flagged?
Well, part of the, part of the issue is when kids leave. Well, part of the, part of the issue is when kids leave and so they're not here to sign the deposits. Um, or at the end of school, it's very difficult to get people to come down to our office to sign things. I think we've looked at, um, we had initially, because we had so many extracurricular, um, comments, Mark and I had taken that away and I was reviewing every single payment order. So I have since given that back to who should be doing that, which is the middle high, um, or elementary principal. So the answer is, they look at all, everything and they wanna, they wanna get us. Because they wanna be able to, you know, show that you, you know, they looked at everything. And, and the reality is, there are some of these things that are no brainers that we can work on, you know? Um, I mean, I heard somebody say that they didn't have a key to, to do the drop for the money, like, that blew my mind, you know? So, I mean, it's just reiterating these points to people who are new and who haven't been here. And just making sure that everybody has the information that they need. Because I don't think anybody really understands that we have two hundred thousand dollars of actual cash coming in and out of our extracurricular funds for a school district.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was that much either.
Right, so that's, that's quite a bit of cash.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we just wanna be cognizant of what we're doing.
For those one dollar candy.
Because the last thing, I want anybody to, I don't want anybody being accused of stealing money. I don't, I don't want any, any of that happening. I don't want any money to get stolen, so, so that's where we, we're looking, so... If anything else?
Okay, thanks. I have a couple shout outs. Um, obviously, this being my first fall here, opening day of school and in the first few weeks. Um, first of all, I have to give a shout out to Pete Buehler, um, The Dash in the Dark. Uh, I know Pete puts a lot of time and energy, man, unlimited energy into that. And to be just an observer and listen to see and watch, um, that Dash in the Dark was just absolutely amazing. Um, you know, forty-some schools, fourteen hundred runners, the time and the effort that went into all that. And I have to thank also the support staff, the chaperones, the teachers that came out and supported that. Um, Roger Bolton was a rock star in the, in the ATV, I mean, he was around that loop forty times, just having the, the lead person chase him. Um, I think he was dizzy by the time that it was all over, but just an amazing thing that this district can put on to put our name out there. And, um, I betcha, you know, as, as the years go on, which they have been, um, we're gonna get up to fifty, sixty, seventy schools coming up here for, for, for an event like that, so it was, it was absolutely amazing. So kudos to the staff and Pete and, and all the chaperones and, you know, the people involved in that. Um, homecoming week is next week, I'm excited for that, although, um, I will be at the superintendent conference in Saratoga Springs through Wednesday. But I'm excited to come back, I know there's a lot of great events happening next week, so if you can make it out. The bonfire and Powder Puff is Thursday, which, you know, we'll be at, um, the football game and the dance. Um, JC has also kind of taken the charge in Rachel's Challenge, which is a, um, character education program that I have a lot of experience in, um, that, that really serves, for the most part, middle schools very well. And us trying to create a, a, a culture here of, of, you know, basically a new middle school atmosphere. We're gearing the Rachel's Challenge next week, Tuesday and Wednesday, to our middle school kids. Um, there's a presentation that'll occur in the morning for both the middle school and the high school. And then there's a, um, a full day workshop on Wednesday, the day after, that our seventh and eighth graders are gonna participate in with a majority of, well, about fifteen or twenty staff members, um, from all of the buildings. And, uh, something that's gonna be real, um, real eye opening, real emotional and, and, um, a real nice, nice way to have, um, the seventh and eighth graders to be a part of that and have something to, to grab a hold of, so, you know, I'm excited for that. I mentioned that, uh, in an email to you earlier, Nicole and I and Jordan, we've been sitting down with the SEI Design Group in regards to our building conditions survey and our next capital project. Um, there will be a community forum held on October twenty-second, which is a Tuesday at six PM. We basically kind of outlined where we want to go as far as, um, setting up deadlines to have the board, um, hopefully approve a capital project to the community come the springtime. So SEI is going to basically prioritize the jobs they think must get done and then basically outline all of the other items for us. That will occur within about the next two weeks. Um, on the fifteenth, we have a meeting, which is, uh, in October, October fifteenth, in which we will present to the board, um, basically, you know, recommendations from, from SEI and us. We're also gonna send out some RFPs for construction companies. And within the next month or so, um, SEI, Jordan, myself, board members, we will select the company for those interviews. And really, um, and again, after the board meeting on the fifteenth, on the twenty-second, we'll have an open forum for the community to come in, to hear our initiatives, um, certainly nothing will be set in stone, but to lay the project out of, you know, here are the items that must get done, these are the costs. The, um, I do believe this is gonna be phase one of a multi-phase project over the next two or three years. But we certainly wanna get some stakeholder and community groups interested in what we wanna do and what we can hopefully make Oakfield, you know, evolve into, so that is the timeline. And hopefully sometime in the spring, we can go out with a proposal for the community for a, for a capital project to occur over the next year or so. So that's the timeline, like I said, I did send you an email, um, and, you know, just keeping the loop on how things progress with that.
So the October twenty-second forum is just to tell the community what's going on, it's not to collect any input from the community?
It is not, we are not outlining any sort of, you know, our board meeting on the fifteenth will be basically, um, showing the board, you know, the, the different tiers of, this stuff must get done. Um, the middle school, high school windows must get done, this must get done. These are the pri, these are the top priorities that must get done during phase one.
Correct.
And then we sit back and say, and what do we want the scope of phase one to look like? Um, because there's other things that may be able to wait, maybe you do want done, and that's where the board's gonna have decisions on.
That's on the fifteenth.
That's on the fifteenth, but no final decisions.
So what about the last?
But on the twenty-second, this is now kind of rolling out to the community that, you know, here comes a capital project, this is what we're doing, these are our findings. And then basically having people sign up, if anybody's interested, we're gonna have meetings continually to happen as the, as we progress through all of, you know...
What's the purpose of the meetings?
The purpose of the meetings is to gather input of, and, and drive, and I guess, an advisory committee to the board of what the community wants to see and to help the board drive their decisions of what you want accomplished in phase one of this project.
That's, I just wanna be sure I understood what you said.
So the twenty-second would be, would be to gather interest from the community?
So the October twenty-second? In what?
If people wanna serve on some stakeholder, community groups in regards to, we're gonna have another meeting in a couple of weeks, do you wanna be a part of this and progress through this as we, as we move forward?
So I thought when, from the email, that the October twenty-second was to gather input from the community, but from what you said just a few minutes ago...
Really to roll out?
It was to announce to them what you were already doing.
Correct, to talk about the building condition survey, this is our group, this is what we've done so far, we met last week with the board. Here are some priority items that must be addressed, but here are some things that we're gonna be looking down on the road. And then are there people willing to sign up and, and be part of these committees moving forward, you know, to, to help?
And the committees then would be just to hear what's going on and then they take it out to the community, or would those committees have input on what goes on?
They'd, they'd be a voice for the community, um, in what they wanna see.
So they would have input on some decision making?
Um, well, the... The decision making is up to the board, but this would be, yes, yes, this would be suggestions, feedback, ideas.
That's what I wanna know.
Um, they would bring up questions, they'd bring up, you know, again, different, different things for the board. But the decision making comes to the board on what you want done.
Sure, I guess if, I'm gonna go out and encourage people to come and participate, I wanna know what to say. If they're, it's one thing to say, join this committee and you'll hear periodic updates of what's going on versus come to join this committee and you'll have input to it.
It's our purpose of probably having a committee of fifteen to twenty people that would come to weekly or bi-weekly meetings throughout this whole process. But we want to be able to tell the public on the twenty-second, what is going to happen to this district over the next year, two years, three years, that this is coming and, 'cause I don't know if, if the community knows that we do have a capital project, you know, on the line. So it's really rolling out this information to them.
And a rollout is different than asking for their input, so, and they come to these weekly or bi-weekly meetings. Are you asking them for input? Will, will you be asking them for input? Will someone be asking them for input?
Yes.
Or will they just be informed of what?
No, they will have, they will have a, a hand in how the board is going to move forward with the capital projects.
Okay.
And those committees, is it, is it all one committee or will, will the employees of the district, teachers and whatnot be in a separate committee? I'm assuming that, um, we'll have a lot of teacher interest, a lot of people that are employed here, a lot of their interest. It really depends on who shows up, um, you know, depending on the committees. Um, I know some school districts break it down where you have an athletic committee, you have, uh, um, you know, a fine arts committee, you have an academic committee, you know, but it really depends on who has the interest, exactly.
There's a lot of people we gotta break it up, but there's not a lot of them all made together.
We all, yeah, we also talked about flexing in and out, like, if we know it's gonna be athletic related, then Jeff would come to that and give input. If we know it's gonna be from the science wing, then we would have them come, you know what I mean?
There's, there's certain parts of this district that will be looked at, um, as far as, you know, the safety and security of the middle high school building. Um, if you're interested in that, please come. If someone is only interested in athletics, well, that may not be a meeting for you. So we're gonna kinda have to see going down the, going down the line, how those meetings work out. But we certainly want the community to have a voice, you know, to help the board in, in their decision making.
It's really exciting.
Any other questions for Jen? Oh, you just, yeah, she was. Sure. Did you receive the new ones or? On our, on your hire, did you wanna?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was really just gonna introduce her, but I have something else I'd love to feel like...
Why don't we do that now?
Okay. So Courtney Kelly, uh, interviewed last Friday and we're very thrilled to, uh, welcome her to Oakfield, Alabama, as our new phys ed and health teacher. And, uh, invited her tonight just to come, so you can put a face for me, so Courtney, welcome to Oakfield, Alabama.
Welcome, welcome, thank you.
Thanks, Courtney. Okay, thanks. Uh, new business via consent agenda, uh, be resolved that items eight two through eight nine be approved?
Some of them.
Any discussion?
Can I just say, the, the corrected tax rule information, I'm expecting more of those. The, there was a new rollout of the enhanced STAR for over sixty-five. And if you didn't pay attention to the letters that you received from the assessor, you could be in jeopardy of not getting your enhanced STAR. So we've periodically been getting rolled in people who may or may not be eligible for STAR, who it was not on their tax bill. So, that being said, we have to reissue the tax bill with the enhanced STAR based on what the state is telling us. So we might get a couple more of these, um, we can recoup the money. I have to redo the application for STAR, I'm waiting till a couple of months from now when I know that we're not gonna do anymore. So, um, so I don't have to do a bunch of them, but we're looking at about eight hundred dollars a pop, depending on what town they're in, 'cause there's different maxes in each of our towns. So just so you're aware, that money is not lost forever.
Okay, you're, you're mentioning about tax rules, I maybe should have asked for, um, the veterans, um, exemption or reduction in taxes, it's still on our radar.
Yeah.
And we need to make a decision on that prior to, was it March?
December.
December, okay, so, so...
So maybe we put that on the next agenda.
Yep.
The other thing that is coming up with terms of taxes is the economic development corporation is someone wants to, um, wants to make a presentation. And I also have information on some, uh, legal advice on not getting a pilot and having them take money off, having them take value off our cash rules. So, um, something we can look into, I can send that documentation out to the board and see how we wanna proceed on that.
Any other discussion on anything there? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Communications, I think probably just what's at our spots here. Um, discussion roundtable, if it was submitted, is anything popped up?
No, I just wanted to ask this communication, is this the company that wrote up our, no, it's just, okay.
No, anybody interested in going to New York State School Awards, it is in Rochester. I'm going to the day one, I'm potentially, um, I may ask about going to day two, there are some good things going on there. But I would suggest that anybody who's interested, do that and then we can meet up and maybe go to some of the, the, the...
Any interest if I can get the days on?
Okay, well, you can let me know, I mean, I can through Tara or let Tara know if she can sign along.
Okay, have any of our committees met since the last?
I think not, Matt.
Uh, on the personnel, via consent agenda be resolved that items eleven two through eleven thirteen be approved, is there a motion?
Some of them.
Some.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes? Uh, we're, we're in executive session, we're on executive. Discussing the kind of litigation. Okay, uh, be resolved, Board of Education, our executive session at, uh, six forty-eight to discuss pending litigation, move a motion?
Some of them.
So, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed? Thank you.